Good evening. Welcome to the Pullman City Council meeting for this Tuesday, November 16th. We welcome you here. And first of all, Dee, would you please call roll?
Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Chapman.
Present.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Records.
Here.
Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Under announcements tonight, first thing we want to talk about is some damage that the City Hall sustained from the windstorm that came through here yesterday. And I've asked Mike Urban to give us a little summary on that. And we've had crews out there. We want to thank Public Works. We want to thank Jeremy, who's our building inspector, and Ruth, I saw there out working, and many of our buildings crew. So, Mike, you want to give us an update on that?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So, last night, shortly after 4:30 during the windstorm, we heard a loud boom and the building shook. And once we went out in the, I'd call it past twilight because it was really hard to see the other side. We saw what you probably saw when you walked in the door today, as part of our roof was laying on the east side of the building that used to be connected to the west side. This opening's about, oh, 16 foot by about 24 feet, 30 feet. And what basically happened is that front southwest corner, enough of a gust of wind got it and flipped it up over itself, bounced a couple times, and it fell down. So, in its current resting position, it appears to be fairly safe. Tomorrow, we will be cutting that down and moving it. And in the meantime, we have brought in a contractor to do this work. Now, the first thought we had, which I'm sure many of you had, is how is this related to the warranty work we just signed off on last week? And after sending our buildings crew up there, who are all former contractors, and they do these inspections and everything, we've come to learn it did not have anything to do with the previous work. It had to do with the initial construction. And there's cleats and some other pieces going. I'm going to have our head of the Protective Inspections, Jeremy Moore, kind of do a synopsis memo to all of us, walking us through the whole thing when this is complete. So, right now, we are waterproof in case of an event. There was probably 15 minutes earlier today where it started to snow a little bit. I don't know if anybody noticed that, where we were a little exposed, but we finished getting it tarped off. And so, by the end of business on Thursday, we expect to be watertight. And then, it's just a matter of the last little pieces getting done. So, this should all be behind us fairly quick here. But, yeah, the long and the short, and the way I relayed this and talked about it when we got home is, I've been here for just short of three years, and I can think of at least eight windstorms that were a little bit stronger than this one. So, this really came as a surprise. But the way it was explained is that that corner, you know, as the wind is coming right up grand, has just basically been fluttering for a while. And as it got bigger and bigger and bigger, this was the storm where it finally decided to do something. So, nobody was hurt. What damage we have is already starting to be turned into insurance. It was a little dicey getting up there and getting pictures earlier, so we really appreciate the Pullman Police Department coming up and flying their drone and shooting some video. Soon as we get that last piece off the roof, too, we'll go and get some pictures of that as well. We're all tracking our time towards this. And, yeah, we're just really hoping to get this behind us. It's a fluke-fluke deal. Certainly, we're going to check the other gable end, even though it's on the traditionally downwind side, just to make sure this isn't going to happen again as well. So, is there any questions or concerns at this point? I think there'll be some more information to come. We'll get you some tighter pictures. Oh, I've relocated the finance department downstairs to keep them in the same building. We expect to be able to get payroll out on time and continue our regular AP processing.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
In other announcements tonight, residential leaf collection is underway. Sunnyside Hill leaf collection starts tomorrow. And we also have College Hill on Monday. For more information, full details on the leaf collection schedule, visit pullmanwa.gov. Pullman Winter Farmers Market starts this Saturday, November 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Inside the Brelsford Visitor Center, the winter market will be held on the third Saturday of the month through April 22nd. From our friend Rob Larson, who used to be in our IT department, said that Food Security on the Palouse is hosting a Thanksgiving Meals Giveaway in Food Drive at Rainey Park on Wednesday, November 24th, between noon and 6:00 p.m. They have put together 25 Thanksgiving-themed meal kits to hand out to anyone that needs some help this holiday season, or students staying in town over the break that could use some easy ways to prepare Thanksgiving-inspired food, no questions asked. Also, they're trying to collect non-perishable donations during the event. Any donations will be brought or received. They'll actually get some pizza, thanks to the local Pullman Domino's. And all donations from the event, food or monetary, will be delivered to the WSU Food Pantry to help students experiencing food insecurity throughout the year. I want to personally acknowledge the personal donation of former WSU football coach Nick Rolovich to the Parks Department for the new Cougar logo that's seen in the Cougar Plaza with a nice crimson lighted background. Coach Rolovich contacted me back in August 2020 that he saw some brick logo there that wasn't in good shape, and he wanted to fix it up. And he said he was willing to pay for it. So, I contacted our Parks Superintendent, Alan Davis. He worked with the artist Jim Robinson of JD Rebel, and the new Cougar logo was installed. And after the change in leadership of the Cougar football team, I contacted Coach Rolovich and said I understood if he didn't want to pay. But his response was, who do I make the check out to? He said, I'm a man of my word. And he came to City Hall, personally handed me the check for the Cougar logo. And for that, the city is grateful. To improve city services by facilitating snow, gravel, and leaf removal, parking is restricted in portions of College Hill core area during the WSU fall, winter, and spring breaks. Vehicles found parked on the core streets between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. during the WSU breaks can be sighted and towed. For a full list of streets, please contact our main website. We also would like to point out that we made a proclamation and joined a lot of cities around the nation that we're celebrating our local small businesses and contributions they make to our local economy and the community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7 of the firms with paid employees, and they are responsible for 65.1% of the net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas, small businesses employ 47% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 88% of the U.S. consumers feel personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And now, therefore, I, Glenn Jackson, the Mayor of the City of Pullman, do hereby proclaim November 27th as Small Business Saturday. And I urge residents of our community and the communities around the region to support small businesses and merchants on the Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Also, this is a note for your calendar for December. You can join WSU President Kirk Schultz and First Lady Noel Schultz for their community holiday open house on Thursday, December 16th, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. For more information, you can contact pullmanchamber.com. Those are our announcements today. Our first item on the agenda tonight is a presentation. And we're dealing with the airport terminal presentation. We'll start with Mike Urban, our city supervisor. And then, we have Tony Bean here. And I want to acknowledge that Gary Redner is here, the city supervisor of the City of Moscow. And we thank you, Gary, for being here tonight. And I know that Mike Urban was over there for your presentation. So, Mike, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening again, Council. So, again, with us tonight is Tony Bean with the Executive Director of the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport. And pitch-hitting for Brett Kudlikie tonight is Tim Dacey. He's an architect and project engineer with Meaden Art. So, they're here to provide an update on the terminal project and what needs to be completed as far as time-wise, especially doing so ahead of the federal dollars that are set aside for allocations towards this project expire. So, staff intends to bring this back to Council on the 30th, which is our next meeting, for a full discussion on the financial component of it. You're going to get hit with a lot of information tonight, so I wanted to make sure you had ample time to soak that in, ask as many questions as you could tonight of the presenters. And we will put together the financial parts, which I have been discussing with Mr. Redner over in Moscow, as to how we can best partner as cities, as we're partners in the airport as well, to make sure we get through this last part of the terminal construction and making sure the funds are available for the building. So, with that, Tony, Tim, it's all yours.
Thank you. So, tonight, we're really just, it's a recap of where we are right now with the terminal design and the anticipation of the completion of the design and through construction, as well as, you know, primarily focusing on the financials that are going to go in and make this possible. The process to date, you know, we've been working with the airport and with a Terminal Action Committee, which is representatives of both Pullman and Moscow for quite some time now, really establishing what the needs are for the terminal and what the desires are of the community of that terminal. You know, what does this terminal need to embody? We had a series of meetings with what we call the TAC. And at the seventh one, I think, was the final one where we really established we knew what we wanted, we had a good idea of what we could afford, and we married the two together, and we had a direction forward. At that time, we had identified a total of $60 million of project costs. That's everything. As you know, this is a greenfield site, so that's everything from the road, the new parking lot, the terminal itself, and apron for the aircraft to park at. Of that $60 million, $50 million is available through federal funds, various federal funding programs. And the Airport Board commitment was for the additional $10 million. Our current target, where we are today, that project costs have gone up to 61.61, we'll call it. But the federal funds went up at the same rate. And so, we were able to reallocate some of the funds down the road for this project, and therefore, the Airport Board commitment is still at the $10 million. So, the cost history, during that TAC seven meeting, that final TAC meeting, as I mentioned, we identified everything that needed to go into this brand-new facility and site with the additional $10 million. And we even had some cost reductions to meet that target. So, we left there saying, in order even to get to that $10 million, we're going to have to take certain parts out of the project to stay within that budget. We are working with Hoffman Construction Company, who is your GCCM partner on this. And they, and through that and through our pricing exercises, not all those things that we took out delivered quite as much money as we thought they would. There were also lots of cost increases as the project got better identified, the mechanical, the electrical, various components, the costing got real, and the prices went up. And of course, the market conditions, we've all been reading about with inflation and everything else, drove the prices up. So, again, we had to rebalance and make sure that we're staying within that $10 million. And so, our current design approach to do so, throughout, we've really been striving to mean those goals that I'll speak to in a moment of viable terminal, and the main one being that terminal that works now but can continue to grow in the future as your implements grow. And to do that, we had to implement area reductions on both, you know, we had to take out some of the square footage of the building. But we also enhanced some of the financial protections. We made sure that as the design goes, there will be money to pay for it. And I'll go into some of those various hedges, if you will, just to make sure that we've got money to, we have buffer money available to us. And so, we're proceeding on a sound plan. So, those design priorities. Maintain expandability has been key. You know, Tony Bean is really driven from day one. Functionality is what this thing needs to do. We need to be able to efficiently process passengers and help the airlines out. And so, it's a two-level building. We've maintained the basement and the bottom, which allows us to keep all the building surfaces down there, and therefore, the main floor is easy to expand. We're leaving in space for a second security screening area. There's one now, but as the implements grow, a second one will be needed. That's a very difficult thing for airports to reconcile as they move forward, because a lot of times, they get hemmed in, and there's nowhere for that expansion to happen. We're keeping the building systems efficient and making sure we don't have to relocate any of the primary systems as those expansions happens. And we're also identifying phased growth. And so, it doesn't have to happen at once. As different parts of the terminal, maybe a ticket lobby, additional gates, the need becomes available, the need rises, the terminal can expand accordingly. So, we've been able to maintain all the program elements. And again, the basement to support those in the future. So, the design, the main one is square footage. We've reduced the main level, square footage and the lower level square footage. We're under 40,000 square feet now. We've also put the mechanical units on the roof just to reduce the basement size. So, here's the floor plan where we are now. The top of this plan north is actual north, so this will face Airport Road. The ticketing area is over here. You know, right now, there's room with the one airline. They're currently working out of three podiums. We're doubling that capacity. And so, there's ability to get another airline, even two more airlines than this. The security checkpoint that I spoke of, this main one here, it's probably twice or more longer than the one you have right now. This one is built to current TSA standards, where your existing one is shoehorned in, and it's less efficient just because it's harder for the passengers to negotiate. There's also ample queuing area. There is a bag claim, a bag belt here, which will also be the meter greeter area that's supported by a concession space here and rental cars. And so, there'll be a great arrival moment here. And once you get through security, we have the recomposure lounge, as well as two gates here on the southeast, as well as a gate here on the southwest that can be closed off and work as a gate for charter aircraft. And so, mostly, the teams that fly in and out of the airport can actually bypass security and come through a special gate that is closed off, so we can board charter aircraft simultaneous with passenger Down below, it's a lot of support spaces, the airline spaces, the TSA screening, possibly their office spaces, and all the bag tunnels and everything else happen down below, as well as, of course, the electrical rooms and the building systems. So, this is all down here, just to keep the, you know, all the workhorse part of the building out of the public eye and allow the second floor to expand more readily. So, this is called scope reductions. This one is actually maybe this week's good news. Part of the scope reductions we had looked at were to, this curved roof you hear, you see, is something that was identified by the TAC as something that they really liked. We looked at a lot of different building forms, and we're trying to emulate, you know, some of the beauty of the Palouse here. On this gorgeous site, we have, one of the value engineering items we looked at was taking this out for a sloped form. And as we worked through it with our structural engineers and Hoffman, we were able to find a way to do this just as efficiently. And so, we're able to get the slope back in. So, comparing where we were at TAC seven versus now, the grant funds are effectively the same. The main differences now are, of course, the square footage. Our total square footage is 38,000 now. We were 11,000 square feet larger at the end of TAC seven. But we're still maintaining all the core components, and we've even added a few back in. So, we still are expandable. We still have the three gates. At the end of TAC seven, we were considering taking the administrative offices out of the building. We've got those back in. As I just mentioned, we've got the curved roof back in. There's still the second screening lane. There's still pre- and post-secure concessions. The main parking lot is originally designed. That'll be a great revenue generator for the airport. And we've deferred the secondary parking lot, and we've cut the rental car parking lot into half. But we're still able to provide for rental cars. So, for Mike, the financial model. The total funding for the federal and CARES money for the terminal is the $34,278 we see here. There's an additional almost $17 million just for the apron. By and large, that money is dedicated for the apron. And so, most of what I'm going to talk about here is just for the terminal and the landside costs. But of those two, that's $51 million in federal funding for this project. And, you know, I've worked on quite a few terminals. That is an extremely high number, especially at the regional level. We don't really see funding like that available. So, through a combination of the CARES funding and this airport's great relationship with the FAA, the funding is, I just want to say, remarkable. So, as I noted, there's still the additional $10 million to get the program in there. 1.9 of that is the local match required, when some of that federal funding comes with a local match. And so, we need to pay for that, both on the terminal and the apron. And then, there's another $7 million after the matches are met. So, the total available between those, the local contribution and the federal, it's a $61.25 million funding package. So, and really, what we're doing is working backwards to the terminal cost here on the bottom right. And so, of that money, the funding that's available, we spent some design costs to date. The landside, as I said, we've already reduced the landside to a parking area and the new roads that'll serve the terminal. That parking area is necessary to, of course, for the passengers, but also for revenue generation. There's a number of owner costs that we're tracking. And so, of that $43 million, we're down to a terminal budget of just over $20 million. And then, that's the one we're currently working with and are working within. So, I'm going to go through some more numbers, but we're calling this Budget Protection Strategies. And just quickly, we want to go over these four terms. And these are just to say that, maybe to give you some assurances, that the numbers that we're looking at have in the appropriately appropriate contingencies at the appropriate times. And so, we're not going to come up short at the end of the project. So, first of all, there's a design and estimating contingency. Our drawing sets are not complete. And so, we're working with a contractor and keeping enough money so as the information becomes, you know, more developed, there's money to pay for that as they become developed. So, as the drawings, there shouldn't be gaps just because the drawings aren't yet complete. There's also something called a contractor contingency. The contractor is the prime, but they'll have multitude of subs out on the field. And those, sometimes, there's gaps of who's responsible for what, and we want to make sure we've got those gaps covered. So, there's a contingency for that. There's another contingency we're calling owner design changes. It's the owner contingency. This is after bidding. And if there's any changes made to the design during construction, or unforeseen conditions, perhaps a soil condition or something else that happens during construction, there's money set aside for that. And that's not necessarily even going to be spent. It's just money available in this budget. And then, there's bid alternates. We've got parts of the building that if the bid climate comes out unfavorably, we don't have to proceed with them, and we can still go on with the rest of the project. Or perhaps, we can bring other ones back in. So, again, going through this, I know a lot of numbers here, but the, you see where we've broken it down by terminal, site, which is the landside site of the parking and the roads, and then the apron, which is where the aircraft park. So, the total construction cost there is $44 million. That number has contained within it that design estimating contingency, as I said, for the parts of, as we proceed with design and add, maybe try to enhance the design a little bit. There's 1.5 million total additional money in there for escalation, which of course, is a big number right now. And it's a tough one to get our arms around. But we are, we've got 1.3 million in there to escalation between now and bidding, which is late spring next year. The contractor contingency, another $700,000, just to make sure that there's money in the project in case, if there's any scope gaps or other things. And again, if that money's not spent, it goes back to the owner. So, of that $44 million, there is 3.5 million in budget protection, which is 16% of that is just baked in as a safety. There's also the owner costs. We'll get into those in a minute. But just to say, we're covering quite a few numbers, just to make sure that, of course, the engineering and the architecture fees, but all the other permitting fees, everything else necessary to deliver this project, are the inspections, the system development charges, everything else is already covered in that. And then, these owners' design changes are the owner contingency. Another 7.5% or $2.3 million for either unforeseen conditions or potentially to bring some of the alternates back into the project. And even within all of that, currently, you know, that I said, the $60 million of where we are, we've got another $1 million in there of, we're within our budget and even beyond it by $1 million. And so, we're on the right side of working within our budget and working with the contractor. Quickly on those O's, just in case, sometimes, these are called soft costs. We call them owner costs. But these are really the costs of the project that are not directly going to the contractor. We've got money set aside for, you know, everything from geotechnical site work, A&E fees, but even public art permitting, printing, all the way down. And then, these owner changes at the bottom is probably one of the big numbers there, that $2.3 million. And so, we're, this number really is intended to cover everything for the delivery of the project. A couple of those alternates we talked about, one would be to shell out one of the gates. This would be the charter gate. And even though I call it the charter gate, it's a swing gate. It could be used either for charter commercial service, as well as the administrative space. That's something that we've been, we've been fighting very hard to keep the admin in the building, but that's an easy one for us to shell out just as a hedge. And even the boarding bridge, we're going to have a pedestrian ramp leading down and the ability to groundboard aircraft like you do now. And so, even that could be delayed. And these are, these are, I think, to come back in later, but ways for the project to be able to move forward. And so, you can see here, really, the summary, again, of the costs up at top with the soft costs added in, the total project costs versus our total project budget. If you add in the variance and those two alternates, it's another $2.3 million that we've put in just to make sure that this project is safe and on sound footing to move forward. On the site, I just mentioned some of these things that we took out of the project right now. So, everything you see in yellow here, just by orientation, the existing airport terminal is probably another order of magnitude off the site. It's about a quarter mile to the east. And so, and you can even see in here below the ghosted old runway where the new terminal will sit. So, all that you see in here, yellow, the new access roads to Airport Road, all the circulation, the parking lot and all the gates that go with that, as well as the rental car and service road lots over here in yellow. The ones that we've designed but shelled or we're going to bid as alternates are half of the remaining rental car lots, the secondary parking lot, and the administrative lot. So, that $10 million, as I said, 2.8 of it is for a local match. That's to really access the, all the federal funding that's available to us. And then, the remaining 7.1 gets us to the 10. And not all of that has been identified. So far, the airport believes it has 3.8 million in available funds in its own reserves. And then, last week, the City of Moscow, I don't want to overstate this, but pledged or voted for up to $2 million of funds for the project. So, you know, the City of Pullman has discussed contribution. There's a Wickman Point nine County tax that's also available. Lots of outreach has gone to the universities, and they're, I think they're sounding optimistic, but no commitment to this point. And so, right now, we have an unidentified $4.118 million still to be reached to get to that $10 million. So, the next steps, you know, it's really the complete that local fundraising, identifying where those sources come will allow us to proceed with the project. Really, the commitment of the funds. Really, the commitment of the funds, the goal is to identify them by the end of this year. That really helps us and the contractor be ready to position the bidding and making sure everything is on time and ready to proceed once we start construction. In fact, we're even looking at doing some early procurement packages in steel and maybe mechanical and some electrical components, both because those are really hard commodities right now to come by, and we want to make sure they're on site when we need them. And also by procuring them early, we'll be able to cut down on some of that escalation. But they really need to be in place by June of 2022. And here's the, and so, and then for design, those early bid packages, we're looking for mid-January right now as we go. Getting that curved roof back in there came with some, our structural engineers are working overtime right now to get it back in, but we're still trying to get, if not mid-January, a January bid package out for the steel. But the construction documents by the end of February for everything else. And that allows Hoffman to bid it in time, to be, have the numbers in place, and so the FAA can secure the grants. So we make sure that money stays at Pullman and doesn't go to another airport. And then the project schedule, a lot of lines in here, but really the, I'll sum it up for us. You know, we're right here at the end of 2011 right now, completing the design and through February. This period and all in here is really just about getting the bids together in a way that can secure the grants. But we're really starting for an early summer groundbreaking to be able to complete construction by the end of 2023. And that's my presentation, but I'd be happy to take any questions.
Great. Nation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a great presentation. I have a question, actually, too. Given the growth and the amount of growth in the region and flights and so on, when would you project that we'd have to extend the terminal or aprons or both? And the second question would be, how much cost? I love the roof design. It's very impressive, but how much cost does that add to the building itself?
Okay. So for the first question, there are a number of things that trigger the growth in the terminal. One of the main things we look at is peak hour, when, you know, it's that, when everything's happening, you know, we could, you know, probably add 1,000% growth without needing any more terminal if it was perfectly spread out throughout the day. But we, more than likely, a second airline is going to come in at some point, and schedules are going to start to overlap, or there'll be another city. So we've even factored in growth for those events to some extent right now by virtue of having two gates and really three. We, by pulling admin out into a separate building, that gate one will become a third full gate. That is going to take care of you for the foreseeable future. I don't want to give you a hard date on that right now, but, you know, I think this building footprint as stands is easily going to launch us for the next 10 years. And as I said, you know, we identified up to five, I think even six gates for the full 20-year-plus look ahead. And this building, this core of this building is able to reach that. As for the apron, right now, we're designing a four gate, a four aircraft apron. It might be peeled back to three just to better meet the funding, and we might use some of those apron funds. We can't use all of them, but some of them to help pay for the terminal. And so three to four aircraft at the apron. And again, you know, right now, it's generally one at a time. That larger apron's going to help quite a bit with the charter service and allow parking for charters, probably bring more of those charters to Pullman rather than some of the outline communities they go to now. That apron also has a de-icing stand in it, too. So that'll help the airline efficiency. And then as for the actual cost of the roof, the curved roof, we've been comparing, the one thing we've really been striving for there is a high-volume space. You know, it's just, it's a terminal. It's really, you know, all the comings and goings. And so we've always been pricing it with that in mind. We early looked on basically a flat roof throughout, and the TAC expressed their displeasure at the aesthetics of that. And so we stepped away from that. So the price right now, we had a sloped roof, and it's, the funny thing about the curved roof is it's, it has a lot of efficiencies in it because it's one form and just the lateral connections. That roof is better designed for structural than when we had a sloped roof. It was actually three-sloped roofs, and the different parts to those added different complexities to it. And that's why we were able to prove to ourselves that the curved roof is efficient, and so it's the design and the look we wanted. And it was really, it was a wash. The costs were less than $100,000, like $50,000 apart.
Thank you. Nice presentation. At what point in this process or in the timeline will the costs be stabilized as far as are we going to anticipate additional escalation of costs? Or is there a point at which those costs become locked in?
Yeah, so escalation is an extremely difficult one to commit to right now. But we've, even, you know, from, as we started these presentations, you know, I'd say within the last month, we've even bumped up our escalation number. I think we went, shoot, I don't want to give you a hard number now. I don't remember offhand, but we, I think we rose it by 4% from where we were, you know, many months ago, just because, you know, Hoffman's talking to their subcontractors in the community, and of course, they're bidding things out and watching that number. So the, you know, there's a lot of different numbers in here that were, I forget where it was. All right, so where I am. Here we go. So the first round of numbers here, the 3.5 of project contingency. You can see we have 1.3 million in there for escalation. We anticipate, you know, that's what it's going to cost. We have 1.5 in design and estimating contingency. I would expect we're going to spend that. You know, there's ways to continue to, we've been pulling back and questioning cost at every step, but we also want a highly functional, well-maintained, you know, durable, efficient building. And then the contractor contingency, that one may or may not be spent, but, you know, I think prudence would say, you know, we should anticipate that. So that 3.5 million, as we proceed forward, we're anticipating all that will be spent. The other 2.3 is money that, you know, the owner design changes, the typical thing that happens, there will be some unexpected costs during construction that we'll need to go to that. But on the Greenfield site, those are usually few. So usually that money is spent in bringing some of the other things, like the ability to expand the parking lot, for example, or not. That's when you would decide to spend that money.
Can you explain GCCM?
Sure. And Tony asked me to explain GCCM. There's a term called a construction manager at risk that some of you may be familiar with in Washington State. It's, that is regulated for public projects, and it's called GC, General Contractor Construction Manager. And so that's allowed us to, we interviewed four different teams, construction managers, well over a year now, ago now, and it allowed us to pick a good partner that was selected because they were price competitive, but also because of their reputation and someone we had worked with. And so they've been at the table with us for quite a while now, helping us look at the numbers and reaching out to their subs and vetting, you know, really giving us a real-time look at what the costs of things are. They help us price alternates like these roofs that we just talked about to make good decisions on that. And they, also constructability, you know, their foreman has been on the part of their team, too, so knows what's coming up. And, you know, if there's a better way to do something, we get those into the design early, and so we're not making changes later.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Well, I'll just speak to the GCCM process and try to answer your question, Council Member Ray. When we select a general contractor construction manager, when they're done with bids, they give us a price. And if we don't change anything, that is the price. If it comes in under, we get money back. If it goes over, that's the at-risk part. The contractor is at risk. So their pricing, as Meaden Hunt designs, they're going through these pricing models, and our big push on Meaden Hunt and Hoffman as the contractor, get us within something that we can afford. Because when we came out of the FAA process, we have a forecast, and it says the building should be X size in 20 years. We're not going to get there in one step in 20 years. We simply don't have the funding. So what can we get to that makes it expandable? Can we get to there in 10 years? Speaking to Council Member Weller's question. But we'll know the number when they put the bids together. So it'd be April?
Yeah.
So April will have a number, and that will be the bid. And if there's something that changes, it would come out of that owner design change. But they'll have bids and things, and we can decide at that point how to add things or if we've got to subtract things out of the project. Right now, the big push was we had to get the flexibility out of the design team because they have to start designing. We can't bid something we don't have written down. And if we don't get design done, we're going to run out of funding timeline.
Regarding the deferred projects and future projects, what does that process look like for securing funding for that? Will we have reserves or will we go through, like go back to the FAA? How, what does that look like?
Yeah, so what kind of pushed a lot of that was, and the reason that the number is 10. The $10 million number and the CARES funds are what we are using to pay for what is known as ineligible items with the FAA. The FAA can pay for public space, meaning the basement that we desperately need in this building because we don't have the depth in the building. Because of where the runway center line is, where the road is, you simply can't get deeper. You've got to look at, okay, where we park an aircraft at and what those angles are. So the only way to get the building bigger was to build a basement area into it and then open up both sides. That being said, the critical part of the local funding goes into those items such as airline ticket office counters, things that the FAA won't pay for. They go into the administrative space. They go into the concessionaire. We don't have a concessionaire now, but it's in this new building, and it's a badly needed thing for when people get canceled and flights canceled, or somebody wants to be able to have an amenity that they enjoy at every other commercial airport in this country. We don't have that. Well, it's built into here, but those funds, that's where that comes out of. When we go to approach the FAA with a new gate, the FAA will support that because it's public space. But we're never going to go expand the terminal building because we need more concession space or because we need administrative office space. It'll be because we need additional public space. And that discussion with the FAA is a very linear, easy discussion versus we're going to make a bunch of other choices. So we could, at the end of our capital improvement program, right now, we could set in six years, we need an additional gate or we need additional, we were planning and programmed, I think it was three bridges, right?
Yeah.
And we're, but we're looking right now at one bridge. We could go add those bridges in, into a CIP at a later point. But it makes it to where we can absolutely do that.
Any other comments?
When I was getting ready to fly out a couple of weeks ago, and I was with somebody at the airport, we were sitting in the secure area, and she, he looked at me and he says, "So I hear we're going to have a smaller terminal." And I said, "No, no, just a second. What did you just say?" He said, "A smaller terminal." I said, "Now, you're in 8,000 square feet here right now, okay, in this terminal. The new terminal's going to be at least 38,000 square feet." And he says, "Oh, I just had heard it was a smaller terminal." "No, it's actually, you know, five times as large." And he said, "Oh, that makes a lot of difference." I said, "Yes, we had to scale back from 50,000 square feet to cut back so we could afford it." But that's what, you know, and so sometimes the rumors out there, they said, "Oh, they use the term smaller." It's really not that way. Tony, there's one other thing I'd like you to mention, too, and that is, and Tim hit on it a little bit about the amount of federal funding for this. But when you talk to other airport managers, and when you look at a percentage of federal funding for a terminal, we are far higher here, thanks to all the work that's been done, than other terminals would be.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, there's a massive difference. Typically, for a project like this, 20 million is the cap for discretionary FAA funds. So what we've done, and the reason that you saw that first slide, it said 60 million, and it moved to 61, is we're taking from our fiscal year 2023 entitlement funds from the FAA, and we're moving projects backward because we need as much money into this building as we can get. And so we've squeezed everything to the point where we're maxing out the discretionary amount that the FAA can give, which is $20 million. We've used all of our entitlements for the last three years. We've used entitlements that other airports had that they didn't use. And so there was a million dollars additional that came there and the CARES funding and everything else. So that typically, we'd be about 25, 26 million in federal funding minus CARES and all that other stuff. The rest of the amount would come locally, so you'd get about half. Right now, we're asking for a 10 million local participation to leverage $51 million. And so if you add that to the runway, and if, let's say the number came out for the sponsors, it really was for $4.5 million. That's two and a half that the sponsors put up for the runway project and a potential two for a terminal. That's $4.5 million that has leveraged $221 million. That's a, that's an astonishing amount of funding, and it comes down to the partnership that we've been able to enjoy with both cities and the FAA, and that we produce the product and the results that the FAA expects with projects and the things that we're doing. So it is, it's an opportunity that we otherwise would not have had. Prior to this, because the question comes up, well, if you didn't have CARES money, what would you do? We were looking at TIFI loan, which we could have borrowed money for 50 years at half the prime rate. Problem with CARES is CARES pushed us out of the window of how much percentage of federal money we could have to use a TIFI loan. So it, on the one hand, it helps because we have immediate money now. On the other hand, it took away a tool that we were looking at very hard trying to get the project done. So it's just a different way to do it, and it comes with some different constraints. But in this case, there are a lot less constraints. But it, any additive that we would have, we would be putting in towards, like the parking. We know that the parking is going to be, it's going to be constrained. There's 400, almost 500 spots in that lot that you saw designed, which is huge. But when we sat down with the board and we thought we did a really good thing about expanding all of the parking that was behind the fire station, we figured we were good. And we filled that up in like two weeks. We were at capacity. So those additive items are going to be those things that we can easily do that provide revenue to the airport, so the airport is as self-sustaining as possible, which is one of the grant assurances that both cities sign. And it's one of the requirements that we have as far as management and the direction from the airport board to be efficient and do those things.
The other thing you might mention, too, is about the time, the timeframe, the fact that we have an environmental study that's all been done, that we did it for the runway, but that applies to the terminal, and that has an expiration date.
Correct. We, yeah, we knew we had the problem with the terminal when we started the runway project. It just, if you can't land the airplane, you don't need the building. So we cleared both projects in the environmental documentation, and we cleared both projects through a planning process. But environmental documentation has a timeline on it. CARES has a timeline on it, and that's the push towards the end of 2023 is 2024, we expire. And things have to be done in order to meet that goal, but we needed to get a project that we could actually do that can be designed on time. The other thing that I've been asked is about the infrastructure bill. The FAA hasn't promulgated the regulations and how they're going to deal with infrastructure yet. What we know, it's estimated, there's $5.2 million staggered over five years in additional entitlement for the airport, for our airport. And there is a competitive terminal fund, but we don't know what the rules of any of that is at this point, and we have to design now. Tim's team has to get a design ready by the end of the year, the beginning of January, so that Hoffman can bid that and we can get started on time. And so it, it's, the infrastructure package is great. If things come in and we can help get a little more public space, it'll be awesome. But we're not, we're not waiting for it because we just simply don't know how long it's going to take the federal government to write the rules.
Tony, you might mention the CARES money expires at what time?
Yes, and the CARES, the CARES funds, they expire in 2024, and they are critical for our ability to get the product that came out of the Advisory Commission as well as the amenities that I mentioned that are not eligible. That's what those CARES funds That's what those CARES funding funds are going to, is to make sure that we can provide those things in a terminal.
Counsel's concern, and everybody's concern is about the rising costs, and we've already brought that up. But one of the rumors out there is, well, look what happened with the runway project. But people don't forget, the runway project started with one set of rules with the FAA as far as what a runway size is like, and you might go over that.
So, yeah, so the runway, because of the program length, we started in 2011 with a plan and a budget, or a look-forward budget that actually started in, I think it was 2009. And you can budget, you plan, you go through your environmental, and then the FAA's design criteria completely changed in respect to the aircraft and the things that we had to have, space-wise and other pieces, and that you have to follow what the current design criteria is. Regardless, if you started doing the design in 2006, 2008, 2009, we don't start construction until 2015, and that was a massive impact. Because now you have to construct under the design criteria that exists in 2015, not what you were thinking in 2008. And a lot of that is just the sheer length of that program. That being said, we have been able to be as efficient with the runway as possible, and it has helped the development of a terminal. We knew we had to move all that earthwork. We put the earthwork where it was most advantageous to move into the next piece, and it's saving the terminal program quite a lot. There's a large amount of money in earthwork that was saved because we had to put it somewhere. So let's put it where it's most efficient for us to do that.
Any other questions? Okay. Mike?
Yeah, Mayor and Counsel, if there isn't any other questions, I was just hoping I could set the table a little bit for the next meeting as far as the financial discussion. Tim, can I trouble you to go back to the slide on the potential match down to that 6.1 million, because that'll help with the overview of this? Okay. So I said 6.1 million because our own construction and how we are going to be able to fund this, we've come up with a couple of different solutions that we'd like to show Counsel to do that. Because at the end of the day, that 6.1 million, if you add the 2 million back in, it appears that to get this done in the timely manner, the city of Pullman will probably have to be the bank. And that makes a lot of sense, too, because we can charge a lower interest rate than what the banks are doing out right now with, you know, prime at 3.25%. So there's some moving parts here that I really want to put together and do a full presentation to Counsel on. But really, when you look at what all the other partners are coming in, if they can give us all the money upfront, too, that certainly lessens some of our pressure going into that. But this is a partnership between two cities, and we want to, you know, be the leaders and be good partners to show both universities and the county and everybody else that could potentially contribute that we are in this and we are pledging X. So that's really the discussion I want to be able to have with Counsel on the 30th, and then talk to you about the financial mechanism and how to do that, so they can go out and start getting this thing to bid, and we can get this done while we can leverage as much money from the federal government as humanly possible.
All right. Well, thank you, Tim, Tony. Thank you, Gary, for coming over.
Thank you.
And Mike, thank you for your presentation and the way you're working on this together. With this, we now go to item number two under Presentations tonight, and this is the Fire Department's annual report from Fire Chief Mike Heston.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, Counsel. It is my pleasure to present our 2020 Annual Fire Department Report. So I'll be starting on page four, if you're following along. So department responses were 2,308 calls for service, which are down about 13% from the year before. And most of this was due to the effects of COVID with the mandates and restrictions placed on our city and Washington State University. So that pretty much had effect on everything that we did last year. Looking down towards the call percentages on the bottom, our percentages of calls remain the same, 70% for medical calls and 30% for fire calls. So that's pretty much as it was before. Turning to page five, looking at station responses, Station One handled 55% of the calls, at 1,258, with Station Two handling 45% of the calls. And the difference between them was 208 calls between the two stations, which is similar to the year before. So, and this was a result of staffing both stations at the same of four people. So that really helped close that gap where the other stations did not have to cover for the other ones. So that really helped out with that staffing. And we started that in the summer of 2020, so that barely has been going on a year. So we're seeing the results of that, which are very positive. Down at the bottom of page five is the back-to-back calls, and those dropped down to 22% from 25 for that. And that's, again, due to the COVID activities that kind of restricted what we did. Turning to page six, we have a chart of the incidences by time of day and then by day a week. As you recall, most folks were home during that time. A lot of workers were not in their offices, and so a lot of our calls pretty much maintained the same. Monday mornings were busy because folks kind of weathered through the weekend, and they decided to call in ameths. And same as on Friday, they finally decide on Friday that I better do something before the weekend gets here. So you see a couple of spikes there, for sure. And then down towards the bottom is our mutual aid responses, and really, the only big change there was to the city of Palouse, pretty much doubled in calls to Palouse because of the COVID outbreaks that they had there. And they just had a lot of extra medical calls out in Palouse, which is kind of a concern for them because they don't have a lot of personnel out there to maintain that 24/7. So they definitely have, are struggling with that. So turning to the next page, on page seven is a pie chart of our total responses. And really, the two biggest changes were there was the decrease in calls to the WSU campus because they pretty much were shut down, people in the residence halls were limited, and then an increase to the city of Palouse and District Four. So those are the big changes overall due to COVID. Dropping down to the fire responses, 698 for the year, which was about a 2% decrease. And we had about 22 fires located inside a structure. And kind of want to highlight in the most common fire call types down in the false calls, in the carbon monoxide responses, 66 calls, which is a double what we had the year before. Because if you recall, when the fire code was changed before that, about 10 years before that, they required folks to have carbon monoxide detectors, and they last about 10 years for end-of-life. So the time you buy them off the shelf, they've been on the shelf for a couple of years. So we ran into where they're end-of-life 10 years. We had a lot of responses for false alarms due to just carbon monoxide detectors end-of-life going off. So we still encounter some of that as well. Turning to page eight is a pie chart of the total fire responses, and really, the only big change there from the year before was the decrease in calls to the WSU campus again. And that was about 34% decrease overall. We had a couple of large mutual aid fires throughout the year. Unfortunately, both of those were to the city of Colfax. One was to the Fong Building, and then on Labor Day, they had a large fire in downtown, as you recall, and then one just outside of town in Green Hollow. So those were our large responses that we went to to give them a hand. On page nine, we have the fire loss and salvage. So we had just over $100,000 in fire loss in total property last year, and the value of that was just over $1 million. So we saved basically just over $1 million in property to the owners due to quick responses and plus the fire protection that they had in the buildings, too. So that also helps with that. Our single fire loss in Pullman was about $45,000. Down here was a mobile home that was fully involved. When we got there, a dry windy day, so we were so fortunate that we didn't catch other things on fire. So great job by the crews keeping it confined just to that structure. Turning to page 10 is our medical responses. We did 1,610 calls. Throughout the year, decrease of over 333 calls are down 17% from 2019. And we did, 52% of those responded to, needed ALS service of some kind, and we transported 63% of the time on those calls. And due to all the COVID-19 challenges, we kind of changed our response. This one was the one we really changed our response on, is limiting how many people that we put inside the facility, where the patients were. We did a door triage just to see what was going on before we called the troops in, just to make sure we maintained our protection levels. We also had challenges in shortages of protective equipment, as you recall, so supply chains. We finally got stocked up on that. And we had to have some alternative ways, like putting cartridges on our air breathing apparatus face masks, just as a backup, just in case. So we had, Chief Scharnhorst did a great job in getting us prepped up for that. Dropping down to the most common medical types of calls, the first four columns basically were probably COVID-related type calls, even though only one of them classified as actual COVID. So we had a lot of folks thinking they might have had it, didn't know what they were, because there was a lot of unknowns going on at that time. And lucky for us, too, we were able to take advantage of the CARES Act dollars as well by purchasing some disinfecting equipment for our ameths to help keep the firefighters safe. We can also use those in the building. And then we also purchased an extra cardiac CPR device called an autopulse that we connect up, and that helps do CPR on the patient. That way, limits our exposure to the patient in getting close. Those are very handy devices for us to use. Down to the bottom of page 10 is our pie chart on EMS responses for 2020. And really, the only big changes, again, was the increase of EMS calls to Palouse and a decrease to the EMS calls on campus. And I want to reiterate that none of our folks became sick from patient direct contact for COVID. So we stayed safe the whole time through that, which was, I was very grateful for that policy we had in place. We did have a few folks get COVID, but it was not from patient contact at work. It was from folks outside. So they did a great job doing, staying safe. Page 11 on personnel, the Counsel authorized the hiring of two firefighters in 2020, which brought us to 34 on shift. And then we replaced an individual right before the end of the year. So three of those folks went to the academy that year in North Bend, and then one of them had to pull out, had some unforeseen situation happen to him, and the other two continued. But in the 10th week of the 12th week academy, it got closed down due to COVID, so they had to come home. And then the other candidate that was able, had to pull out, went to the next academy, and they made it almost all the way and had to pull out as well because of COVID. But we were able to make sure that all three of those folks graduated, and we completed their certifications with our in-house training. So luckily, we were able to do that with our robust training program. Under fire prevention and investigation, they were also affected by COVID as well. So everything kind of came to a slow pace with construction at the beginning, as you recall, kind of shutting everything down, businesses. But they had some several projects they had to finish up up on campus, had three large projects with the Global Animal Building, the WSU baseball complex, and plant sciences, as well as the retreat in Pullman was finishing up as well. So those are some projects keeping them busy. And what really kept them busy was we were out to help the businesses and restaurants looking at, they were restricting their occupancy loads, if you recall. So we had to go out, and a lot of those facilities, we don't have occupancy loads in them. We only do that in large places of assembly. So we had to go out to all the businesses and recalculate what their square footage is and what they could do with 65% and 35%, remember all the percentages. So we had to help reclassify all that. And then they were very creative on how they had business with outside tents and those kinds of things we had to assist them with as well. So we didn't participate in any public events, as you recall, and then our offices were basically closed to the public, and the fire prevention folks worked from home and still got their work done until they moved into the new city hall later in the year. On page 13, the last part here on training. So even with all the COVIDs, with all the COVID restrictions we had, we still were able to adapt with training. So we switched to a online format. We use full COVID precautions, spread folks out. We continue with our recruit academy because we're still going to need those folks to respond. We had a good, successful recruitment. We don't have any problem with recruitment with volunteers, so we always have plenty, double what we need when we take on in the class. And then we were also successful in acquiring another AFG grant for, to pay for the overtime for firefighter, fire officer one and two training. So we were very successful, still moving forward with everything that happened by COVID. So, and with that, I'll answer any questions.
Nathan?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. I have two questions. How much have you responded to specialty labs up at WSU? And then the second question is, I know the police have discussed, and we've discussed as well, the joint teams for shooter, active shooter response. I can't recall the name.
Sure.
Emergency response teams or something?
So the first question, how much have we responded up to the labs? It's really rare that we've had responded up to the labs for any significant issue as far as, we have maybe some minor spills and some minor smells and a few things like that, but we rarely respond up there for anything of any consequence. So they do a great job in maintaining that. And then we work with the facilities, doing annual tours of their bio labs up there. So working with that, meeting those needs and doing tours, so we make sure we're doing that. So as far as the join with the active shooter, that's something we're moving forward with. We did, were successful in getting some capital and CIP dollars to do that. So we've been working with the PD and doing some cross-training with them to help with those types of situations. So right now, if we have an active shooter situation, our job is to stay outside until the scene is deemed safe, basically, which in the latest, around the country in training, you know, we have folks with penetrating wounds, you know, don't have the potential to live very long if we're not taking care of them right away. So our goal is to work with the police, create some kind of a warm zone where we can work together, combination with the police, go in quickly, grab those folks, get them back out, get them treated, and get them to the hospitals quick as we can, in the safest manner that we can. So we're kind of starting down that path right now.
I appreciate all that information and your service on the fire safety.
Eileen?
Yeah, Chief and Chief. Last night was extraordinarily challenging. Could you give us a little bit of a rundown of what all you did last night? I know we had EMS in my neighborhood on a non-wind-related issue for over an hour. We had two rigs up there, so I know you guys were probably stretched pretty thin. Give us a rundown on what last night was like for you folks.
Yeah, starting about 5:00, obviously, you had the roof issue here. But shortly before that, we had a tree that fell over up on Maple Street onto a house, damage to that. I did not respond, but we didn't have any injuries to that. And then we had a couple of power lines that came down because of the wind and branches, and one of them was actually on fire. So we had to sit on that one for a little bit on Maple Street until Avista got there. And then we also had a couple other fire alarms go down at the same time, which is pretty common when the power goes out in windstorms. So we had that, and we had also had a unconscious full arrest situation go down at the same time as well. So within an hour, we had five or six calls just all going down at once. And we had all our crews out. We had District 12 coming to assist us as well on the medical call as well as the fire alarm. And then all that just kind of went away, and then we were done with the wind events at that time. So just back to normal calls after that. So, you know, past history, we've staffed up in the past for these large wind events, but Pullman, for some reason, seems to be fairly isolated with things compared to the rest of the area, so we did pretty well. So, and we didn't staff up anything extra last night at all for this because we didn't really anticipate anything huge. Knock on wood, of course, but we just had that about an hour just after dinner, and that was it.
Yeah, well, we all really appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Okay. Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mike, item number three, I think you said you might talk about deferring, so...
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Due to the late nature of the evening and the remaining agenda, Counsel would like to postpone this item to the next meeting on the 30th. There is sufficient capacity to perform that within a reasonable timeframe.
Okay.
I think so, since it's on the agenda.
No, we don't. Yeah, we just pulled from the meeting. Right. So the next item, then, would be the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to read by title only?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, Laura McElhune, our City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 26, 2021, and approve them as submitted. A motion to approve voiding check 104135 and the dispersment of subsequent replacement checks numbered 104774 totaling $5,132.36. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 104775 through 104848 totaling $2,914,913.20. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 104849 through 104858. Electronic transfers 35, 36, and 782 through 786. Payroll direct deposits numbered 72102 through 72451 totaling $935,499.96. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 104859 through 104916 totaling $283,300. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 104859 through 104916 totaling $283,313.89. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 104917 through 104973 totaling $587,819.51. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable electronic funds transfer numbered 10252021 totaling $47,511.89. A motion to authorize a lodging tax grant up to $30,000 to the American Junior Golf Association for a junior golf tournament at Palouse Ridge in 2022. A motion to ratify change order number one to the sanitary sewer replacement 2021 project. A motion to accept the arterial streets resurfacing 2020 contract as complete. A motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Whitman County Humane Society for the year 2022. And resolution number R-62-21, a resolution accepting a sanitary sewer line easement granted by Washington State University, authorizing the execution of said easement and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Is there any item the council would like out for discussion? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of items one through 12. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Move and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now move to the regular agenda tonight. And the first item is an ordinance fixing the amount of tax levy for the year 2021 for collection in 2022. With that, our finance director, Jonna Davis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a brief presentation tonight. And it is not up there. There, showing up. Should be nice. Oops, that was the wrong one. Now I have to hit escape. Wrong one. Sorry about that. There it is. And now bring it up. There we go. Sorry about that. This presentation is going to be very brief and is just to be done before the property levy, before the request, requested action. In the prior presentation for 2021 levy by jurisdiction, I presented this nifty dollar bill item here. And I wanted to remind everybody that we are just talking about the 4.4476 for City of Pullman only. This is per $1,000 of assessed value. The approved 2022 general fund expenditure budget breaks down into these departments as listed on the graph here. And the fire EMS, police, parks and recreation, and library departments make up the majority of the expenditures in the 2022 pub, general fund budget. The amounts presented are based on the budget as approved in 2020 and are, do not account for any of the ongoing contract negotiations. I also wanted to note that the 1% levy increase does lag behind the IPD or the implicit price deflator rate of 3.8%. This is the limit, the 1% is the limit factor allowed by RCW 8455. And what this means for us is that the operational costs will likely exceed the 1% increase that we are requesting. I did also want to present, now that I have the county assessor's final values, the estimated cost of the 1% levy increase. I've provided a 100,000, 250,000, and as noted in a recent report, a $330,000 value estimates up there of the change. The 330,000 was reported as Whitman County's average home value as of September 2021. The change in the levy based on the final figures from the county assessor is .0239 or 2.39 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. Thus, giving the $330,000 home, if that is the assessed value, would be a change of $7.89 per year. I did want to re-present this slide as well, as I got the finalized numbers from the county assessor. I did update the new construction values, once those were confirmed. And so I did update those. So we have a more accurate view of what the city EMS and Metro Parks property tax levy amounts would be expected if 100% received in 2022. And again, the Metro Parks levy is in here as we're going to have that meeting shortly, the Metro Parks Board meeting shortly. So we don't have to re-present this data. And are there any questions?
Questions or comments on this part? If not, you have an ordinance before you. Do I hear a motion on that? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Move and seconded. Any further discussion? Would you read the ordinance, please, Laura?
Ordinance number 21-13, an ordinance fixing the amount of the tax levy for the year 2021 for collection in 2022 to raise revenue to meet estimated expenditures and establishing the special levy to meet general obligation bond debt service obligations.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Next item is item number two, an ordinance fixing the amount of the emergency medical services tax.
This is the same information just provided up there on the screen. So staff is recommending the motion and subsequent approval of the ordinance for this levy with the 1% increase and the capturing those additional revenues from the new construction.
Do I hear a motion on this ordinance?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Move and second. Laura?
Ordinance number 21-14, an ordinance fixing the amount of the emergency medical services tax levy for the year 2021 for collection in 2022 to raise revenue to meet estimated expenditures.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now adjourn the meeting of the city council. We convene the meeting of the Metropolitan Parks District. First of all, an item on the agenda is a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the Metropolitan Park District Special Meeting, October 26, and approve them as submitted. Do I hear a motion on that one?
So moved.
Second.
Move and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is a motion to approve the dispersments of accounts payable checks numbered 104831 totaling $395.50. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Move and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now go to the resolution fixing the amount of property tax levy for the Metropolitan Park District. And once again, Jonna Davis.
Good evening, President and Board. Tonight, I have had presented the brief presentation, which the last slide is up before you, for the property tax levy for the Metro Parks District. If there are no questions, staff recommends the approval of the resolution with the 1% increase and capturing the new construction activities as well.
Any further questions on that? Then do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Glenn. You said capturing new construction as well. So we run down the, run down that real quick. So what would we be capturing exactly?
For new construction completed during the year, we would be able to capture that, the tax levy on that new construction. That $15,000 listed there is the estimate based off the new construction value provided by the county assessor.
Any further questions? And do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Move and second. Laura, would you read the resolution, please?
Resolution number MPD 21-1, a resolution fixing the amount of the property tax levy for the year 2021 for collection in 2022 to raise revenue to meet estimated expenditures of the Pullman Metropolitan Parks District.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. With that, I now reconvene the meeting of the city council. And we now move to item number three, which is an ordinance dealing with the Department of Community Development. With that, we go to Mike Urban.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you, council, tonight is a follow-up to the memo distributed on October 12 that, with the proposal to create the Community Development Department and appoint RJ Lot as the Director of the Community Development Department. We're not asking for the adoption here of the Community Development Department plan. That's really just added as a item that you can see that this is something that was presented to us by a consultant. And we just use this plan as a template of maybe where things might want to go. A lot like the BDS plan was adopted. So there's some ideas in there that we like, and there's some ideas in there we don't like. And what we're really just talking about tonight is aggregating the four departments of planning, GIS, economic development, and our building inspection group under one umbrella. It's, the idea is to make this a one-stop shop for our community. So I got to there. So yeah, it's just the follow-up on this recommendation. It's something that we've been working through. It's consistent with other cities of our size, and in fact, calling that the Community Development Department is very consistent across these other cities. One of the points that we wanted to make sure we pointed out is that we had our HR manager send out the job description for this. And the third-party folks that do our analysis came back with a recommendation of no salary change for RJ on this. So we're not asking for, to create a new figurehead, and now we're going to have to backfill a bunch of work for RJ on this. He can continue doing his work. This is just a reorganization. It gives him two more direct reports. It takes a direct report off of me. It takes a direct report off of the Public Works Director. And what I have observed over the last 15 months, working with RJ as the Finance Director and now the City Administrator, he's proven to be an innovative leader. He is very customer service oriented and would be able to flourish in this new position. He has my full trust and confidence on this, and that's why I'm bringing this to you as a recommendation to give him the opportunity to lead this group and create some service values to our community. And whether it's somebody coming in for a building permit or pre-application meetings, this is, this could be good for the City of Pullman. And RJ is here if you want to ask him any questions or if you have any questions of me.
Questions or comments? Eileen?
Yeah, just a comment. I read this through very carefully, and I'm glad Mike pointed out that this is just a plan. It's just, it's sort of guidelines like the BDS. Because as I read through it, there was a couple of things in here that I, I thought didn't really work for us, and we're not going to work for us. And RJ really helped me understand that we can do things differently. We're not locked into this plan. And I had some conversation with Jen Hackman about the economic development portion that's written in here. So I will be bird-dogging this very carefully as we go forward. I, I think the ordinance is a very good thing. I think the reorganizations are going to be very helpful for the city. But again, don't, we're certainly not going to wordsmith that plan tonight. But I will be watching it very carefully because I think there's a few things in there that we can just sort of not do.
Okay. Nathan?
Thank you. Mike, you said it very well. RJ, you have just taken to this so well and I really appreciate all you're doing. So enthusiastically would move to accept this.
So that was your motion?
Second.
I'll second. I'll thirty.
Eileen got the second in. Would you read the ordinance, please, Laura?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 21-15, an ordinance of the City of Pullman, Whitman County, Washington, creating the Department of Community Development in the position of Director of Community Development, amending Pullman City Code Chapter 1.20 and Section 16.39.040, 16.39.170, and 16.50.040. And ordinance numbers 99-24, Sections 1 and 2, 1999, 92-12, Section 1, 1992, 81-10, Sections 2 and 3, 1981, 18-25, Sections 9, 10, and 11, 2018, 18-7, Section 7, 2018, 99-23, Section 1, 1999, parts, 21-7, Section 1, 2021, 84-25, Sections 4, 5, 21, in 1984, 16-4, Section 1, 2016, 07-28, Section 3, 2007, 98-2, Section 1, 1998, 96-6, Section 1, 1996, 07-27, Section 1, 2007, 03-18, Section 5, 2003, and other matters properly related thereto.
Congratulations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Council.
We now move to item number four. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of a termination agreement. And with Clayton Forsman, our Deputy Public Works Director.
Thank you, Glenn. Good evening, Council. It's good to be with you tonight. So the item I'm presenting here has to do with some city property. On your screen, you'll see the intersection here of Terraview Drive and North Fairway, Northwood Drive on the north side. So let's see here. It won't work on these screens. But in the southeast corner here, I'll use my cursor maybe. Might work better. So in this corner here, you'll see the Pullman Transit Brake Facility. This is a 2018 image. If you were to go out there today, you'll note that there's no transit brake facility there. That's because we, it was relocated by a developer last year. This image here shows you the old location here at that same intersection and the new location about a half mile north on Westwood Drive. So back to the, the intersection we started with tonight. At that transit brake facility, you'll see in the red box, this is a city parcel. Let's see here. So right here. And this parcel was acquired by the city back in 2001. And the use was to, it was acquired from WSU, and the use was for a bus turnout. As things got busier for transit in 2010, there was a need for a brake facility in the area. So at that, at that point in time, the city worked with WSU and did a memorandum of understanding. And that allowed the brake facility to be built. And the reason that had to be done was the deed that transferred the property back in 2001 stipulated that this parcel was only to be used as a bus turnout. And so that's why the MOU was put in place in 2010. So since that facility has, is no longer being used by transit, the deed also stipulated that if the, the use ceased for more than 12 consecutive months, that the property would revert back to WSU. So that was written into the deed back in 2001. So at this point, really, the property should be reverting back to WSU. And that's what this item is about tonight, is to terminate that MOU and to deed this property back to WSU. However, before I wrap up this presentation, I would like to speak about the city's plans to build around about this intersection. And so as part of that project, the city does need to acquire some right-of-way at the southeast and the southwest corners. And you can see the southeast corner overlaps with that bus, that bus parcel. So on this slide, you'll see those kind of triangle pieces in, in blue. I'm sorry, it's kind of hard to see up here on these screens. Here and here. And you can, whoops, and you can see that overlap. So just to kind of have that conversation ahead of time, the next item I'll be presenting tonight will be to acquire these triangle pieces from WSU. The first item tonight, though, is to take care of the old bus parcel and to deed that back. And with that, I would gladly take. And with that, I would gladly take.
Any questions on that? Follow the, okay. Do I hear a motion on this resolution then?
Move to adopt R-63-21.
Second.
Moving second. Laura?
Resolution number R-63-21, a resolution authorizing the execution of a termination agreement memorandum of understanding, authorizing the execution of a statutory warranty deed to Washington State University, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number five, another resolution. Clayton continues with the triangles.
That's right. Thank you, Mayor. So back here at the same intersection, this item is for the roundabout that we plan to construct next summer. And as I previously mentioned, the, we need to acquire some right-of-way at the southeast and southwest corners of the intersection. We've been busy working with WSU on this acquisition, and they've been a really good partner, working through us, through this with us, and they've agreed to dedicate this right-of-way at no cost to the city, so we appreciate that. On this next slide, you'll see kind of an overlay of the roundabout in that intersection, and the red triangles are the right-of-way needed for the, for the roundabout. And it's pretty common with a roundabout project, they take up a lot of real estate, so it's not uncommon to, to have a right-of-way acquisition component with a roundabout. The one thing we were able to do here is we were able to shift the center of the roundabout south just slightly, and that was kind of strategically done so that we didn't have to acquire right-of-way on both sides of the road. I will note that WSU does have some utilities in this area, so the right-of-way dedication document that's been prepared includes a granting of a utility easement back to WSU for those utilities that exist out there today. Also, they have plans to, in the future, build a gateway sign here, much like you see on Stadium Way and Main Street. So that use is also stipulated and allowed in the dedication document prepared. And then lastly, I'll just mention in yellow, also before you, as part of this same resolution tonight, is a temporary construction easement, and that's the yellow kind of shaded area. It's 10 feet beyond the right-of-way acquisition, and that's just to allow construction equipment to have a little bit more room out there when we're building the project. That would expire at the end of construction. And with that, our recommendation is, of course, to acquire this. I'll leave it up to, to any questions.
Any questions? If not, do I hear a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. Laura?
Resolution number R-64-21, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a right-of-way dedication deed reserving utility easement from Washington State University, authorizing the execution of a temporary construction easement from Washington State University, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number six, another resolution authorizing the execution of a statutory warranty deed. And again, Clayton Forsman.
All right. Thank you again, Mayor. So we're, we're still in the same vicinity here on this, this map. Just a, I want to talk to you a little bit about an area a little bit east of the intersection. So I've zoomed out here. You can see the same intersection we've been talking about tonight here, and I want to talk about an area just east of that intersection along Terraview Drive. You can see, you can see here that the path kind of leaves Terraview for a short distance and has a meandering route before it parallels Terraview Drive again. This slide here, that meandering path is highlighted in red, and you can see Terraview Drive right-of-way in yellow. So that red highlighted area is city-deeded property. It was acquired back in 2001 by the city from WSU, and that was acquired as part of the Terraview, the Ring Road Project. It was what it was called at the time. You can see also, there's kind of an area between the yellow line and the red city property that's still owned by WSU, so it's kind of out there floating, for lack of a better term. Also, so this area is undergoing some substantial development. Dwayne Brailsford is working on developing this property, basically that whole open land area you see, south of Terraview and east of Fairway. So here, I've kind of overlaid those development plans. You can see it's a, it's a massive development. You can see the meandering path and how that kind of falls within that proposed development. And so because this path does that, WSU has reached out to us to see about acquiring that property, deeding it back to WSU, to work with those development plans. As part of that university-crossing project, I do want to mention that they do plan, if Counsel does agree to this, that they do plan to reconstruct that path along Terraview. And in fact, they are proposing to reconstruct the entire path and go from a 10-foot to 12-foot path. So this obviously needs to be dealt with at this stage, so I'm bringing it here tonight, and our recommendation would be to deed it back, but ultimately, it's your decision, and I'd be glad to take any questions you might have.
Al?
So the current meandering area there, I think, has some benches and things, and I have seen people sitting there and hanging out there. So are they just going to go back to pure path with no rest area?
Correct.
I'd like to see some kind of a bench or rest area in that area, because it's right as they start going up the hill. I know I, I go by there a little bit.
We could certainly talk to them about that, Al.
Something like that.
That's a great idea.
I think would be a good idea.
Mm-hmm. Agreed.
You mentioned they plan to reconstruct it, make it 12. Does it give you any kind of time deadline when they're going to do this?
So right now, they're, you can see they've done a lot of the grading out there. They are starting on the first building, so there's a mixed-use building located right here. And then there are large apartments here, 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 and here. So that's kind of their Phase 1. Actually, this line you see here, there's a red and blue line here, is separating their Phase 1 and Phase 2. So Phase 1 is kind of this, this area left of the red line, and right of the, the red line is Phase 2, which is more apartments and some townhouses. I would expect that the construction will go through the next two years, probably on the entire site.
Other questions or comments? Nathan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Clayton, you know, that meandering, I agree with Councilmember Sorenson on this, and having walked around there, I know there's some wildlife that it also, that also uses it as, you know, a place to live. I mean, what's, what's going to be, it's going to be filled in? I mean, what's the case?
Sure. Yeah, they're proposing totally developing that area, so, correct.
Is there any way we can talk to the developer about maybe keeping that, or something along those lines?
Sure. So it's WSU land in the center, and the path, you know, as I showed on the last screen, you know, this, this portion of land here is actually not city property.
That's WSU right there.
That's WSU property. The city property is strictly the width of the path and a little notch there for the, the bench that Al mentioned. So, exactly. So we don't have really control over that center area, just the path currently. That is city-deeded property. And so ultimately, it is your decision, you know, on whether we deed this back to WSU or not. The developer knows that anything they're doing out there now is at risk, because this has not been approved, this land transfer, so, so we have, we have options.
Okay. Eileen, and then we'll go to Ann.
Sort of walk us through, if we don't do this, how would that impede Mr. Brailsford's construction plans?
So they would, they've invested quite a bit in design and hoping that this would happen, but as I mentioned, we've been very clear with them that this was all at risk. So they would have to redo some of their design for their site. Right now, they have some access to the site coming through this area, so I can go back to that next, next slide. They have a driveway coming in, so it would be, it would be a large, large change likely. Here's the, the driveway to, that I'm referring to, right here, and it goes to both the mixed-use commercial building and a parking lot that serves this apartment building here. So they would have to redesign some things. They've, they are starting on a mixed-use commercial building currently. They're getting ready to dig the foundation for this building now.
So I guess I'm not clear, is there plans then to acquire that from WSU as well?
So the land is still owned by WSU. Dwayne is developing it. He has an agreement with WSU to develop it.
He's doing it basically for WSU. WSU granted him that permission.
Correct.
And again, the only thing the city owns is above that long line, little, that very small portion there.
Right. You can see it, it really goes quite a ways into
Yeah.
to the WSU property there.
Brandon?
Yeah, and I specifically remember this, this project and what the goal of this was. I, I definitely, I mean, I agree with Al, benches and sidewalks, it's all part of the quality of life that we talk about all the time. It feels like to me, we had a recent conversation actually about another project with this developer and not communicating with him soon enough, and maybe he would have been amenable to some of the things over near Brailsford Drive had we communicated with him earlier on some of this. And so he, he may very well be willing to, to have a bench in there somewhere and, and make it nice. So I, I would just say, I, I support this, and let's, let's see if the developer can mitigate the concerns that currently exist.
Ann, earlier, you had your hand up.
No, those were pretty much my concerns. What was, what was going to be on that area, and could we, you know, just make our desires known about having a respite area? That, those are my two questions, so thank you.
Al, once again.
I just want to make a quick question, comment here. So it seems a little late to be coming to us now. Why didn't they come earlier?
We've been working on all of these items for the better part of the year to get these to you guys. It's taken a little bit of back and forth with WSU to agree on the legal documents that are before you, attached to these resolutions. But we've been, full disclosure, with the developer this whole time, so they've known, and we've been moving as quick as we could. I mean, it's, it's taken a little time to, to get all these, and I wanted to present all of these items at the same meetings, because I think, I think it's the best use of all of our time. So that's another part of it.
And again, it's been going back with the Attorney General's Office that has to look at this for WSU, and then our attorney, and that also adds time.
There was a lot of back and forth, and it, yeah, we want to make sure that our eyes are dotted on these things.
Any further, yeah, Nathan?
Just one more. So I have a question. That, that entrance, isn't that right around the 35 mile-per-hour mark up there?
Possibly. It's, I know that it may be just west of that a little bit, going off recollection, but...
Is that going to create some issues? This is a side thing, so maybe, I won't go into it so much. That, that's a little concerning. The other thing is, also, and Brandon actually brought up a really good point, the quality of life. And as we start to look at these things, we don't own, own that area that's essentially, I guess, a retention pond or something along those lines, but it goes into livability and quality of life, and those areas, animals that add to our quality of life and, and what we enjoy about Pullman, those areas get filled in, and it's gone. And so I, I think as we continue to move forward and look at these things, we need to understand there's a value in that beyond inconvenience to plans or a monetary value. I mean, this is something that I know adds to my life, and I'm sure many other people. So I just wanted to mention that.
Eileen?
Yeah, Nathan and I, I think are maybe on the same page here. We had a meeting yesterday with Kara about Complete Streets, and this should and could have been part of that discussion. And so I feel a little left in the dark here. We talked a lot about this area, and I mean, a lot. We must have spent 40 minutes on it, and this, this never came up. And the fact that it is a path, that puts it in the purview of the Complete Streets Group, and we didn't, we didn't hear anything about it. And is there some way we can not do this, this action tonight and explore further about ways that this could be, this, there could be some preservation there? Because I think it would add to the, not having an actual picture in my head of the area right this minute, I think it'd add to the entrance of what Mr. Brailsford is, is planning to do out there, and it would be an asset rather than just a hole to fill in, which is why I feel like it's being treated tonight. So if there's some, yeah, there's, these things, you know, my friend Governor Schweizer from Montana, former governor, you know, he used to say, we used to think that the gold was in the mountain, and now we've learned that the gold is the mountain, and we have these little pockets of gold. And Pooch Prairie, it's not traditional Pooch Prairie, but that we need to kind of work with all parties on these things and hang on to these little jams.
I guess on the comment about the Complete Streets, Eileen, I understand your, your question on that. Really, the Complete Streets ordinance is for city projects, so city capital improvement projects. So that's why this wasn't on the agenda with Kara yesterday, to just to answer that question.
Dan?
Hopefully, this is just a real quick comment, but I actually think that having a continuous path 12 feet wide like they're planning there is actually going to be a long-term benefit to the area, especially with the, the scope of the development project they're putting in there. And I think it's worth it to go to WSU and to Mr. Brailsford and talk about the idea that we're talking about with like adding a respite area, changing up the plans for how that path operates through that area. But I don't think preserving it as it exists currently would be in the long-term kind of best interest of the, the multimodal transportation through that area. So I just want to think, you know, I, I think the way the plan is going currently, if they can add some extra elements to that to improve that quality of life along that path, that might be where we go and, and try to work with them on that. Because I also think, you know, just our, the, the items that we had before there, WSU has been, you know, generous in kind of working with, working with the city on those projects that we have going and, and giving us that land at no cost. And, and this is, this is kind of one of those things where we acquired this land previously from WSU to put in this path, and we're kind of just reconfiguring the whole area. And I think, you know, thinking about the area and how it develops as a kind of a, a higher-level view of the entire area, because we're also talking about a path on the other side of that intersection too, extending up in front of the WSU apartments to the west, and having a continuous path as we develop that along that road, and potentially a future connection to, you know, the airport, I think that could be, you know, in, in terms of the long-term vision, like having that continuous path, and then thinking about that as that develops of where do we have respite areas, where do we have little turnouts and little, little things to improve the quality of life as people travel across that path. But this particular spot, I think, you know, we're a little late in the game for, for trying to make changes to what has been already a project in the works for some time now. trying to make changes to what has been already a project in the works for some time now. But, and, and I think that those need to be things that, that are, are talked about more comprehensively. Like I said, a bigger, bigger plan for the, the entire length of that development of that area. But I'm, I'm in support of just going forward with deeding the land back to WSU for this project. But having that longer, larger conversation about how do we think about these things more systematically, not just project to project to project, but more, we have a plan in place for the entire pathway. And then as those projects develop, we can kind of fine tune it. But that's, that's, that's what I wanted to say.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to perhaps reorient the council to the agenda items that are before you. It's a negotiated land swap that involved multiple deeds with no monetary compensation. This horseshoe of a path is part of those negotiations and the two prior deeds that you just approved. So the whole, I, I certainly understand what you're saying about the larger land use issues. But again, that would relate to development plan, project approvals, not to this specific land swap deal. So I just wanted to kind of bring that to your forefront and your brains.
Yeah.
I just want to say, if, if this is part of a, a land swap as part of the negotiation, I think we should have highlighted that in the previous discussions. Because I didn't think these were all connected in that sort of direct negotiation level.
That, that is why all three, that's, that's, Clayton mentioned that he wanted to bring all three of them together. They've been negotiated together, the documents have been drafted together. There's certainly three different resolutions because it was three different parcels in different areas. And so for purposes of clarity, that was part of that extensive drafting process that both our office and the Attorney General's office went through, was making sure that each of these were broken up so that they could be recorded and properly transferred. You know, you've got this weird little horseshoe that doesn't have any type of tax parcel ID number with anything tied to it. It was just simply, again, in the past, a negotiated deal swap between WSU and the city with no monetary compensation. So this is WSU as part of the triangles, as part of the bus transfer station, just asking for a return of, of land that they had previously gifted to the city in exchange for those roundabout triangles.
Brendan?
Yeah, and, and again, I, I say, that's really hel, that's helpful to know that context. I, I say, you know, I, I'm going to support it and I bet if we went to the developer and said, hey, we're going to lose a bench, do you mind putting in another bench? He might be just fine with that. It seems maybe a little silly and small compared to this whole project, but maybe just that conversation is all we need.
Nathan?
Yeah, real quick, I appreciate the explanation of the swap, Laura. And I'm not going to go against this because of, I mean, that area, that retention pond is not even owned by us. My, my whole reason for saying this, it's not about a bench, you know? It's not about a bench. It's about the long term, as Diane was saying and Eileen was saying, it's about the long-term areas that we're starting to give up piecemeal, that our native wildlife are using, native plants, as native as we can right now. And so that's what the side conversation I was having regarding this. I understand this is not, you know, our area. And so it's unfortunate, but I'd like us to think a little broader, so.
I heard you loud and clear, Nathan. Thank you.
Eileen?
Yeah, just to sort of maybe wrap this up, Brailsford has been an excellent partner. I mean, there's no doubt about that. And I think that working with Brailsford, I think we can come up with a satisfactory, you know, solution for, for this little nugget right here. But it is, it's that long-term and we, we're so late in the day on this one because maybe not everybody's going to be, you know, as, as good to us as, as Brailsford chooses to be. So yeah, we have to, we have to find out these things earlier in the process and, and develop that long-range plan. But yes, we will be, I hope we will be supporting this tonight.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
Move to adopt Resolution Number R-65-21.
Second.
Moving second. Laura, would you read the resolution, please?
Resolution Number R-65-21, a resolution authorizing the execution of a statutory warranty deed for the purpose of donating certain real property to Washington State University and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now move to item number seven. Sean Coles, our Public Works Director is here, dealing with the execution of professional services agreement between the city and Welch Comer Engineers. So Sean?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start this item, bear with me while I activate the presentation. I'd like to start this item by talking about an outline. I'd like to make some introductions. We have part of the consultant team with us here tonight. I'll talk to you the background of the project to date, an overview of the project going forward, talk about our current work request, and then finally, the next step in, in the process. So starting with introductions, I've got Phil Boyd and Matt Gillis, both with Welch Comer Engineers. They're, they're of course, the consultant team that won the project through the RFP process. There are other consultant team members that are a part of this team. They're listed here. They're not here tonight, but just wanted to make a quick introduction. So with that, I'll jump into the background for the project to date. And looking at the recent history here, City Council approved the issuance of a request for proposals at the August 24th, 2021 meeting. Welch Comer Engineers was selected to design the project and that was approved by Council at the October 12th meeting. And then lastly, adoption of the downtown master plan occurred at the October 26th meeting. So one thing I want to point out about developing that master plan vision is there was quite a community outreach effort associated with that. So downtown Pullman's major stakeholders and civic organizations and the community were engaged throughout that process. So what we're trying to do is take that vision from the downtown master plan and implement that. And I'd like to have Phil Boyd talk a little bit about that, that implementation of the vision.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks, Mayor and Council. First, let me say thank you for selecting our firm. We're super excited about starting on this project because it's a, a real passion for our community. I know several of you up there and we're just really pleased to have been selected moving forward with you. I want to talk just a little bit about kind of the path forward and you'll appreciate the, the road iconography up there. The projects get, are, are big, so kind of understanding where we're headed gives a little bit of context to where we're starting at today. You'll see that there's phases one, two, three, four up there. Sean's going to talk a little bit about phase zero, which you typically wouldn't have a phase zero, but there's some weather going to be bearing down on us, which is the reason we have our proposing a phase zero that Sean will talk a little bit here in a second. The first phase we're going to move into is feasibility. When we look at feasibility, our objective is to bring forward to council potential options that fit and create place. Because really what we're trying to do in this process is create a great downtown, a great community space where private investment, public enjoyment will occur. The next step we move into is preliminary design. At that point, we know enough, council's given us enough direction, we can go out and interact with the community in an intelligent way. So that's really the, kind of where there's going to be lots of interaction. And we'll bring forward a community engagement plan during phase one for council also to give us direction. How much do you want us to do community outreach? Once we get through phase two, that's when the real technical stuff happens and we move into phase three, preparing the construction documents to put the project out to bid. And then the project goes out to bid and we're into construction and actually the improvements occur. This is just an overview that Sean and I have been talking about the projects and, you know, I worked on the master plan, know lots of, about it, but it still wasn't as simply clear in an engineer's mind where they were at. So I put this graphic together just to communicate the number of projects that council will consider as we move through the feasibility study. There'll also be tweaks to this. There might be projects that appear that didn't happen in the master plan or weren't as a front and center. Some of the projects might fall back when we find a limitation that it just can't happen. But I wanted to provide this graphic overview to see that there's kind of seven discrete projects out there. And then the last thing I wanted to hit, and this is an important feature, I think many of the council are probably familiar with Main Street America, which there's, the, the Downtown Association subscribes to, most Downtown Associations subscribe to. And it's really about four key points, economic vitality, organization, promotion, and design. We're really working on the design component. And I think the council's aware of this. When you get to that design component and you get the bricks and mortar done, there's still a ton of work to happen afterwards. And we always like to make sure, to pitch that to our clients, to make them, make it abundantly clear that it doesn't end when the bricks and mortar are done. Because there's so much work to happen to make the, the, the projects vital from that point forward. And we'll be supportive in that as well and, and start to help build those partnerships as we move through the design phase. So I'll, I'll step aside for a second because there's a couple more things Sean wants to hit.
So switching from the project overview to the current work request, and what Phil talked about was essentially this phase zero scope, which we're calling data collection. We've got a deadline, essentially a race with the weather to do our data collection effort. And that is, we've got a lot of surveying work to do, to do this feasibility analysis. And it's a large survey area. A big part of that survey work is to use drone technology to capture images and then develop topographic information from that. And to do that, it's, it's actually a pretty ideal time because all the leaves are off the trees, the leaves can kind of block that imagery gathering. But also, we want to capture that data before the snow falls. So we're pushing pretty hard to get this part of the, the work done, which is why we're presenting a phase, phase zero element of the project. The second element of this, this work is the traffic count data. We want to get good simultaneous traffic count so that we can track where the cars are coming from, where they're going, where they're going through the downtown. And so that's quite a bit of work. There's a large area to, to study here and you'll see that reflected in the cost. The total cost here is $112,119, the bulk of that being in the surveying work. And as I, as I looked at this scope with Phil and, and the Welch Comer team, we initially started with, with a little bit more surveying work. We cut that back a little bit so that we can get through the project feasibility phase. And if we need to do a little more surveying work after we get through that phase, we can do it. But we just only wanted to do the elements of the surveying and data collection that we need now to do the, the feasibility analysis. So with that, I'll pause before we move on to the next steps element of the presentation. And that is to ask council to consider a Resolution R-6621, authorizing the execution of this data collection phase.
Comments, questions, or yes?
I, I'm for this and just reminded that this is priority number one for council, so I say move forward.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I, I move to support R-66-21.
Second.
Moving second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The final element of the presentation tonight is to talk about the next step. And that's really feedback, once we get this feasibility analysis done. And the primary objective of this feasibility analysis is really to determine the feasibility of constructing these downtown improvement projects that have been identified in that downtown master plan. And then, and then associating a cost with those, those project elements. And so the end work product would essentially be a menu of options and costs that council can say, okay, we'll do these elements, we may not do these. And with that, I'll have Phil jump in again and talk through a few more slides.
Thanks, Sean. So one of the things that, as Sean and I were talking through this, we thought it was important to, for, for us to kind of articulate the way we move through this feasibility process. Because as Sean said, there'll be a scope of work coming forward to council. We want to make sure what we're proposing, the process that we're thinking about, is headed in the path council wants. So that's the purpose of this little segment of the presentation. I put this graphic up, and this is from the Project for Public Spaces. If many of you've been involved with downtown stuff, you probably, you might have seen this in the past. And it, it includes kind of four key elements when you're looking at spaces. The nerd part of it, I'll call it, is in the bottom left, the access and linkages. You know, that's the kind of world that Matt Gillis and I live in. The rest of our team lives in the other three quadrants in there. The reason I'm showing this is to, to show the council that we, we attempt to look at this holistically. If you just had an engineer working on this project, you'd get some great roads and sidewalks. They work well to drive on and walk on, but they might not be great places to hang out because they'd be hard and straight and, you know, boring. And so that's why there's a team with people that are both left-brained and right-brained that, that work on this. And Matt and I like to think we work out of both sides of the brain, but we also understand our limitations. So I put that up to just show council, generally, we're looking at this holistically with our team. Because again, our objective is to create a great place. That, that's really at the end of the day, the road, the sidewalk, those are parts of it, but it's not the primary objective. And Mayor, I'm glad to take any questions as we go, if, if that's okay with you. So the community benefit, the feasibility, or the feasibility elements that we're looking at, like, as I mentioned earlier, primarily it's community benefit. The reality of it is, though, we have to move traffic through. And so you might create a great space, but if traffic's backed up from Grand to Paradise on Main Street, people will be mad. And so we have to strike that balance. Our job is to bring you that balance forward and, and help you kind of weigh those things. Gee, we could achieve level of service D at these signals, but look at this great space we could have. And so we're going to bring those forward to you in a way that's meaningful and you guys can, can help guide those balancing act that you have to do as electeds. Geometric improvements, just fitting in and making sure everything's function. Economic benefit. And, and again, part of our objective is to drive business that exists there and drive private investment in the downtown. Because again, that's what makes a great downtown. And then costs. You know, the reality of it is, if we had an unlimited checkbook, things could be really cool. But we realize that we don't and, and we'll work within those boundaries. So how do we get through those feasibility steps? The, the first one is the analysis itself, bringing those items forward to council to get your spin on them and then working on that community outreach and feedback. Because obviously, the, the direction starts here. We go out to the community, demonstrate it to them, articulate what the vision is, get their feedback, refine, come back and at final, get the council decision-making in that phase two part that I showed earlier. And I'll leave it there and turn it back over to Sean.
So just wanted to finish with a proposed motion after some discussion. But wanted to really get the discussion rolling, particularly on those, those last two slides. Because these last two slides are what we're going to use to develop this phase one scope, this feasibility scope, and then put a cost to Welch Comer contract for that feasibility scope. So I wanted to bring these two slides back up on the screen just so that we can get council feedback on, on the direction that we're proposing.
Any comments?
Sean, you, you want feedback on all of these items?
Just preliminary feedback, so.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure many people understand LOS, but I can tell you that it seems to me like we, we often want our cake and eat it too. We, we don't want any, any congestion at all downtown and we don't want any parking issues at all. But we want a vibrant downtown and it doesn't seem to jive. And we'll go to a lot of places that aren't our own community and we're fine with traffic and parking and, because it's there and it's fun and I, we're just, we're not going to have a bustling downtown if we don't have some of these issues. So I, I would say that for our consultants, they can, let, let's, let's propose a few options for us and... for us and, and see what, what, what washes out after that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I recall us doing traffic flow studies within the last five years, and we do have past, past data regarding that. I don't know if that would be helpful in doing an updated traffic flow, but I would say, yeah, I mean, of course, it all looks good, but also looking at what we've done in the past, as long as it's readily available, in order to inform future decisions. Show me the data. So that's what's important.
Yeah, and I, I agree with Nathan on using some of that. I just know from, you know, talking to residents, my own experience, research, that, that traffic flow is often, let's get from point A to point B as quickly as we can. And I know it's graded out A through F and things like that, and we just, you know, if our priority is downtown and to make it a place that is people-friendly, we, we have to know that people going downtown as fast as they can through there, that flow is, is not a good thing. And I, I would love to see that holistic approach that we saw in, in that one graph. I think great places is something that we, we really all want. And so just the, that context, I, I agree with Nathan, you know, using that data that we have, but making sure that we, we dovetail that with the, the greater, larger picture.
Okay, Dan, then we'll go to Pat.
Sean, I agree with these, these feasibility elements, but what I'm wondering is, is would accessibility considerations fit into this phase, and should that be a prominent figure in, in what we're looking at here?
And I would agree with that, and, and the way I would fit that into this list would be in the geometric improvements, looking at the fit and function.
Okay, Pat.
Thank you, Sean, and thank you, Phil, very much for your presentation and all the work that you guys have done. I would argue, actually, that's not the best way to do that, because you should pose something in a positive way. I would suggest that the old traffic data that we have is probably not really applicable today, just because there have been so many changes in the last even three to four years, let alone five years, that would, would negate some of those studies that were taken. First of all, the time of year that some of those studies have been accomplished, don't take into account all of the high-density traffic, you know, that we're looking at. Any changes, and anybody can jump in here, that I see mainly anecdotally deal with a lot of the growth that we've noticed on the north side of town with Schweitzer and all of the development up there, really drives a lot of that, that cross-town traffic, and that changes, Schweitzer builds new buildings. And I mean, there isn't a time of day that you can drive down, drive north on Grand and see the southbound traffic just being, you know, neck and neck. So I would just suggest it's only one of the items here, but I think a traffic, a current traffic flow is one that we should really be looking at. And other than that, I would agree that we need to do whatever it takes to start building a new and vibrant downtown. So thank you all for your work.
Nathan?
Just one other point with traffic flow, and yeah, I agree with what Pat was saying. It's more of a starting point, is what I was thinking about, especially COVID is still, you know, it's, there's still effects, and so. Now, as far as traffic flow, is that also going to look at pedestrian flow, pedestrian numbers?
Well, and, and the way that we collect that data is with a video system, and so we, we take the video and then we do the counts of the pedestrians, the vehicles, and the cyclists. The, the data collection capabilities that we currently have with the city or with the tubes that you see across the roads, right? And unfortunately, you can't capture the pedestrian traffic with those, and so part of the, the intention here is to capture that pedestrian traffic with, with the latest count technology. Now, that being said, when we make the improvements, we expect to have a lot more pedestrians because it'll be a lot more pedestrian-friendly environment. So one of the things we'll have to do is estimate, as we make these improvements, how many more pedestrians will we see, how will that, will that affect the intersections? So one of the elements that we'll bring back to you will be modeling, where we're literally showing pedestrians walking through the intersection of Main and Grand, and then how that can be accommodated, and then watch how the traffic responds to those pedestrian movements as well. So there's a little bit of estimation work that has to happen, going, looking forward to, you know, improvements that happen downtown.
Awesome. Councilmember McCall was talking about this at the Complete Streets program, so that's great.
So I guess that brings us a tiny technical question, and we can maybe take this offline. Is it actually a video system or is it a counting system? Because with a video system, you have privacy issues.
Yeah, so there's, there's actually, it's a video system, and so the way that's typically done is you take that data and send it to a third-party company that does those counts, and they run it through their software to automate the counts, and then they send you the numbers back. I mean, you can do that manually and have somebody, you know, counting one, there's one card that went through, but obviously, that's pretty inefficient. So we basically send that to the third-party company that will automate that count process.
Okay.
And it's a public area, too, with the, from the highways and roads like that, too. Any other comments? Do you want to go back to the motion slide that you had?
Yeah. So one of the elements of your council packet was this motion, and that was to direct staff to negotiate the fee for phase one professional services with the Welch Comer team and return back to city council with phase one professional services agreement. So basically, you'll get another bite at this apple. You'll see this again when we present that scope and fee, but we just wanted to get your early feedback on this, this, this work.
So is there a ceiling sign?
Go ahead.
Is there a ceiling number? You're saying negotiate, but I'm wondering, you know, I mean, of course, within reason, but, you know.
Yeah, and it's, as a rule of thumb on a design project, you, you tend to plan somewhere between 10 and 15% of the construction cost for engineering services. It gets a little more complicated on a project like this, where it's, you've got a lot more involvement in the public outreach elements, a lot more involvement in iterations, and so we probably go a little bit higher than that for the design phase services, but that's a rule of thumb.
Anyone willing to make that motion?
I would, oh, sorry.
Okay.
That's okay. I was just going to say, I would move to direct staff to negotiate the fee for the phase one professional services with Welch Comer.
Second.
And I lean with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Anything additional, Sean? Or you got everything you wanted?
Got everything you wanted, thank you.
Okay, all right. That's what I thought. Okay, we next move to the Chamber of Commerce Tourism Contract, and it's a discussion item. Mike Urban.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I'm back before you tonight regarding the tourism contract that is set to expire at the end of this year. As part of the agenda item, you can see our timeline since the biennial budget was adopted, and some of the items that we've been up to since, most notably, the October 27th meeting with council members, McCall Records, and a delegation from the Pullman Chamber of Commerce. So part of why I'm in front of you is certainly the expiration of the contract coming upon us, but the other part that I'm struggling with, and I'm really looking for some guidance here as to what to do next, is we do have the Tourism Strategic Plan, RFP, that's out, and it's supposed to be, everybody's supposed to be submitted by this week, and that plan will be put into effect, and we'll get some feedback on that in the end of the second quarter in 2022. So undoubtedly, out of that plan, just like Golden Shovel and BDS, there'll be some recommendations as to what we should be doing strategically for tourism in the future. And not knowing what that plan's going to say for several months, and knowing that this contract is set to expire, it's kind of puts staff in a weird position as to what our next steps are and how we want to fulfill the tourism part of our mission as a city. So I'm really kind of just looking for feedback from council as to how you would like me to proceed for the next year, two years. Do we want to get back on a budget cycle and look at a one-year extension? Do we want to put this out for proposals from other folks? And if so, what should I be putting in that document? Because it is very vague as to what to expect here in this short period versus a more thorough analysis after the strategic plan comes back to us.
Pat?
So we're not going to have a strategic plan or something in place to go forward with until the end of second quarter?
Hoping it comes in sooner, but the grant, as it was presented to us, does have to be spent by July 1st. So that's kind of the last possible date. The plan, once the RFPs are in this week, is to evaluate those and bring a recommendation back to the city council on December 14th, to pick a outside contractor to help us develop this plan, and they'll certainly need some time to do that. I think 90 days is probably going to be a little too fast. I think 180 days puts us fairly close to that end of the second quarter number, so I think it's going to fall somewhere in between.
I just hate to see us continue to get in this time crunch that we've experienced now over the last couple of years for a variety of reasons. I mean, we do an extension, and then we let it drop, and then all of a sudden, we're up against a timeframe again where we're having to make some extensions. I also want to make sure that we're considering, again, that contract period with advertising, where, you know, we're in that window right now where we're looking at advertising for the next year, and so that window is gonna, is gonna close pretty quickly if it hasn't already. So I'm just concerned about, about a timeline and what we're looking at in terms of extending this contract.
And I'm sure the, the Chamber of Commerce is as well, trying to figure out, they have to place advertising for Lentil Festival for August, they have other kinds of things that they have to do too to lock down, so. Other comments? Ann?
So, I feel like the, I don't, I would like, I would be in favor of extending the contract for a few reasons. I still think the chamber is an integral partner of ours, and they're very important in our community and the things they do, and I think the partnership with the city is a good thing, but I do believe that it should be, that we do need to really relook at it, and with all the unknowns right now with these, with the RFP and, and our taking on a little bit of the tourism, I just think it's worth sitting down with the chamber and, and figuring out, because what we're doing would not wholly replace everything that the chamber has and can do for our community. So if there's a way we could negotiate with them or talk about what, what is their vision, what, you know, maybe have them come forward again, and, and just talk about now in this new day and age, and things are much different. I, I just, I'm not in favor of severing this relationship at this time with the chamber.
We, we did have that conversation on the 27th, as it's included in your packet, with council member McCall Records and a delegation from the chamber. They're looking for a long-term contract where they can bring somebody in for a set period of time. I think the original number they threw at us was four years. If I'm not mistaken, I see the heads nodding there. And that was a concern.
I was going to go to Dan next on this.
But I'll, I'll take a step back and let.
Yeah, so the meeting that Eileen and I attended with Mike and numbers from the board of the, the chamber, we, we did talk about all of those concerns, and, and they proposed of wanting to have more like a four-year contract. And we, because the strategic plan, that, that grant that we, we went for with that, that's still pending, we felt, and I really strongly felt that we needed to kind of have a, a kind of point at which we give the chamber an opportunity to, to extend the contract, give them the opportunity to view that, you know, once, once the council views that, gets through the, the adoption, and, and if we approve that as a strategic plan for, for lodging tax, for, for marketing, promotion of Pullman Tourism, that, that that be part of that interim period that we're talking about now of extending the contract. And then, in consideration of the fact that we have a two-year budget cycle now, by extending it to what we're proposing here, that gets us back into that budget cycle, and then we can talk about at that point, after they've had an opportunity to see, after we've, we've had the opportunity to see what the result of that, that tourism promotion plan is, after the chamber's had an opportunity to, to review that, that gives us a check-in point, kind of, to say, hey, how are things going? Do we want to continue with this for the next, the next extension period to get back into that two-year cycle? At which point, I would, I think we would all expect that the chamber would then be going through what we're going to talk about with the, the bidding process or, or the proposal process as a contractor under the LTAC program, where they're going to have to go and make a presentation about how they're going to fulfill the, the, the city's needs for, for promotion. And, and what I see is, is that strategic plan, once we get, once we get that in place, that's going to form the basis of the RFP that we're going to have for, we're going to expect the tourism contractor to be following that as, as the, the kind of guiding star for, for what we go forward with. But we don't have that level of specificity right now, and we need to kind of go through that process before we start talking about those long-term things. So this is just an interim step to get us to the point where we then have some more of that clarity, and then we can start talking about that, getting back into a normal, long-term process.
Okay, Nathan?
That answered all questions. Sounds very straightforward and logical.
Al?
I'll just throw in here, you know, the Lodging Tax Committee has been having many special meetings, and, and we're close, after today's meeting, Laura will be bringing some information back on, at our next, is it our next council meeting?
Correct.
That gives the recommendations of the LTAC committee on some of the funding and tourism stuff and that type of thing. So, you know, I'm in favor of extending this for a short period of time at this point, but we've got a lot of other things going on. We're looking at our own tourism director, we've got the, you know, lots of stuff happening, like you were saying, Dan, and so, you know, I'm in favor of this little extension, and I agree, we can't keep doing little extensions, we got to get it figured out, but the Lodging Tax Committee does have some recommendations coming.
So are you inclined to wait for the LTAC recommendation next, the next meeting, or you, have you gotten enough feedback tonight as far as discussion?
Any significant change is going to require that it be sent to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for their review and consideration, and you're going to have to wait 45 days to give them that opportunity. So I, I don't think it's any surprise they, and it's certainly going to be in their minutes, but at the meeting today, the recommendation from the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee was that the tourism promotion contract be for a period of two years with up to two-years extension, one two-year extension or two one-year extensions. So that's the recommendation, and then they also have a recommendation on the amount of funds that you should include in your budget to, for that contract. The, you'll get a detailed memo at the 30, on the 30, for the 30th meeting, but keeping in mind that as we're really formalizing and giving some detail to the lodging tax expenditure process in the city, things like, that have historically been included in the chamber contract won't need to be in the chamber contract anymore. So for example, funding a special event like Lentil Fest is going to be run through a different, through, through its own standalone process, because it's, it's not part of tourism marketing, it's actually operating a, a special event, and that's a different pool of funds. So the, all of those recommendations are going to come to you at, at your next meeting on the 30th. on the 30th.
So any further, Eileen?
So, so yeah, I, I definitely want to see, before we get into anything longer than a year extension, I want to see what the strategic plans come back from, through the RFP process.
So I'm hearing an extension for a year, but there'll be more discussion the next time.
So I think what I'm hearing is more discussion on the 30th, and then after that discussion, there's a strong possibility that the council may send me back to negotiate for a one-year contract with the chamber to allow us to get on a budget cycle and see what comes out of the strategic plan.
Okay, Brennan? Yeah, are you saying then, then that would be a 45-day wait, though, since it differs from whatever the LTAC proposal would be?
Actually, this would be just an extension. You've been in this transition period. It, it, part of the delay is COVID, right? So the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee wasn't able to meet for, just like you all weren't, you know, had business limited. So it's taken them longer than planned, obviously, to get their recommendations put together, but they have been meeting very diligently over the past three months and going through all of their recommendations, and, and were able to wrap that up today.
I would suggest that a year would be an appropriate timeframe. It's not too long, but yet it's long enough to get business done through that cycle. And then it would put us on, with whatever we're doing going forward, it would put us on that two-year budget cycle after this next year.
Which would be consistent with the recommendation that you're going to hear about on the 30th. So no, I don't think that a one-year extension would need to go back to LTAC.
Since we're not voting on it, but I do see a lot of head nods that agree with that, so that's okay. Next discussion item is the city council legislative priorities. And again, Mike.
Hi. So in, included in your packet tonight is our first draft of the 2022 legislative priorities. This is the discussion items that we will be bringing up with our delegation in Olympia when they resume on January 10th of 2022. It is a short session, I should point out, since they did budget last year, so it's tentatively scheduled to end on March 10th. And since they did budget last year, there wouldn't be a whole lot of, you know, budget items that we can put in NASSC, or certainly there is money there. We pulled these items. I had our administrative specialist Haley Clemmons and sit down and watch the meeting and make sure that we picked all the items out of the discussion that we had on the 19th of October and put it on a one-page document so we can take a look at it today, have more discussion, do some editing, and then be able to bring this back to you on the 30th for final adoption. One of the items that has come up in the last 24 hours, I definitely want to add some discussion about, is the second bullet point under economic development, and that's the railroad tracks. This is something that a lot of us have been discussing offline, as well as together as a council, over the last, oh, seven, eight months since I was appointed city administrator, is to get these railroad tracks that run through town activated and become part of the community as far as economic development, enhancing park space and through the downtown areas, as far as the redevelopment or revitalization project goes. And as you know, we've talked several times about how leaving them where they are and trying to absorb the setbacks as prescribed is not going to accomplish a lot of the goals that I have talked to you individually about during our one-on-one sessions. So after talking to DOT and getting some strategy items from them on how to maybe move this forward with our delegation especially, as well as statewide, they had some thoughts. And one of the important thoughts that I'd like to mention to council is the concern over the term rail banking. This is something that we would definitely want to consider, and how we place this into our strategy is, we want to do it very, very carefully. We want to make sure that the Chipman Trail, which is rail-banked, is preserved. That's an important trail in our system. We want to see more items like that, and the rail lines provide, you know, some really great opportunities, especially on the north end of town, for some parks and those items and the connectivity. But coming out forefront with, hey, we want to rail-bank this and do these items, I've been advised by people at the state level that that's not the best way to sell it to our specific delegation. And taking a more robust approach, a more holistic approach, you know, from both ends of the city on this is the best way to get these folks on board. And if it isn't, then we can certainly come back at a future session and lead with rail banking. But I just, I want to assure the council and the community that rail banking is a very important tool, something that we would certainly want to include in this as well for lots of reasons. But how we word this going forward is, in my opinion, very, very important to make sure we get a delegation that, where we live, stands up to the rest of the state and says, we support this. So with that, I'm looking for some feedback on this as far as language goes, and make sure this is something near or close to the final document, where if we can make some touches on this, we can bring it back to you for the final discussion and adoption at the next meeting. And we do have our delegation confirmed for the last meeting of the year on the 14th of December.
Okay, Brennan?
Yeah, Mike, I appreciate you touching upon the railroad tracks. I, I guess what I would propose, because I understand the wording, and I understand the strategy behind the wording specifically with the delegation as well, is, is maybe we use the word repurpose, repurpose the railroads. We, we leave the word rail banking or abandonment out, and then we, we have that discretion to, to work with the delegation as, as we think can work. Yeah, we, we can continue to discuss with our partners as well as, as what that best way would be.
Nathan?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I wholeheartedly support Brandon's suggestion.
Okay. Other ideas on the legislative discovery? Dan?
Yeah, I, I agree with Brandon's wording on, on that part of it, but I'm wondering if, if, you know, repurposing the railways and maybe stating a little bit more clearly what our purpose is. We, we say in there, would enable activation of projects for economic development, but I, I wonder if we want to just mention specifically in there to maximize the flexibility with which we could activate those projects for economic development? Because what we're talking about, that, that's really our goal, is to give us more flexibility in thinking about all the different types of projects that we could enable if, if we don't have some of the current restrictions that are in place because of the, the current status of those rail lines. And then, because when we, when we put legal terms in there, those have very specific meanings, and, and I, I don't necessarily think we need to get locked into a specific legal term at this point if we just very clearly state what our, what our intended goals are.
Eileen?
Just real quick, throw the words public safety in there?
And-
In the, in the, when we're talking about the railroad tracks, because isn't that one of our specific motivations, is we want to move some things around down at the city playfields to make it safer for-
I understand.
We've talked about that and talked about that, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Other than those changes? Everything else is fine?
Yep, I think we're good.
Okay.
You have to consult with the, with the, with the, with the, with the, with the-
Okay. Under new business tonight, I know Laura McAlloin, our city attorney, has an item.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you all observed, and as Mr. Urban talked about earlier tonight, there was a windstorm yesterday, and it caused damage to City Hall. The mayor this morning declared an emergency in order to enable city staff to immediately hire a contractor. I, I have to say, it was incredibly impressive to know that the contractor was already signed up by the time I got here at 9:30 this morning. So, and that's a result of, of your building official, Jeremy Moore, calling around to his connections and finding someone that had the staff and made the time in their schedule to come assist the city and, and get the building secured. So as some of you may remember, the process for dealing with an emergency procurement like that and waiving the public works bidding laws is that the mayor declares the emergency, and then the city council ratifies that. So since this happened on a council day, we've prepared this resolution for you to act on tonight. It's resolution number R-67-21, and it simply details the fact that you had a windstorm, you had damages, then emergency was declared, and that under the authority of the mayor's emergency declaration, the city administrator has awarded a contract to Sullivan Construction of Albion to immediately affect the repairs to City Hall, and that that contract obviously was not procured through a public process, so, or asking the city council to approve this resolution and authorize or ratify the award of that contract.
Okay. Eileen?
If there's no discussion, I guess, I'm sorry, I'm preempting you. Move to adopt R-67-21.
Second.
I always like to support, Eileen, there's no problem. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. You want to read the resolution?
Certainly. Resolution number R-67-21, a resolution of the city council, city of Pullman, Whitman, County, Washington, declaring an emergency due to property damage caused by high winds, waiving the city's procurement policy, ratifying the award of contracts necessary to repair and mitigate such damage and other matters properly related thereto.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This also is the same thing that we did when we had a traffic box down on Main Street in Grand that was hit, and we needed to get stoplights put in quickly, okay?
Right in front of my face it was.
Yeah, that's right.
Mayor, could I, could I just add something? Because I want to piggyback off of what Laura said. I was here this morning when Jeremy was doing his thing, and it was, it was pretty impressive. I mean, the guy had ice water through his veins. He, he just, he just went about doing his business, and he came in with this sheet that he had worked out, all the potential contractors, and there were maybe five or six that were licensed and bonded here in, in the state of Washington. And I was just so impressed by the way he did his business, just so cool and calm and collected.
And he was very much active yesterday. We were all here too when the thing happened. And the other thing is that they had a crew going to Spokane to get special kinds of two-by-twelves, because that's what was used by the volunteers when they built this church, to get that taken care of.
And I think, now that you mention it, I appreciate you bringing that up, Brandon, because I think I underemphasized during my previous discussion on the roof just how the people in this building last night jumped into action, became part of the solution, and that carried on over today as well. There's more than two dozen people that were working right along with me to make sure this was done, and I valued everybody's input on this, and I think that's why we're so far very successful. And just to put the county, or the council at ease, as well as the community, we did reach out to multiple folks. We were able to get a few quotes, even on such short notice, so we, we tried to do our due diligence, we just didn't, we weren't going to be able to make the full procurement policy, and that's the state of emergency.
At this time, the city council will adjourn to an executive session pursuant to, while the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act do not apply to discussions relating to the interpretation or application of a labor agreement, or that portions of a meeting during which the governing body is planning or adopting a strategy or position to be taken during the course of any collective bargaining, professional negotiations, or grievance or mediation proceedings, or reviewing the proposals made during the course of negotiations or proceedings, the city council is announcing its intention to discuss such matters in executive session. That session will last approximately 10 minutes. If it becomes necessary to extend the executive session, someone will return to announce the additional time that is needed. Council does not anticipate taking any action after this executive session. It is 9:45 at this moment. Let us start the executive session at 9:48. It gives you three minutes to get in the other room so we can get this one going. I guess just three minutes to get in the other room so we can get this one going.